And I feel like that he's a godlike man who makes his decisions for the best interest of this school system. It's a pleasure to serve with you.
Thank you so much. It's a pleasure to serve you. Lee County Schools will join 133 other school divisions throughout the state to celebrate School Board Appreciation Month in February. Almost 850 elected and appointed school board members throughout Virginia will be recognized by schools and communities for their service and dedication to public education. The theme of this year's celebration, Local Schools, Local Decisions, reflects the importance of ensuring that the future of public education remains in the hands of the community it serves. Local school boards keep the public in charge of public schools since they represent our community's beliefs and values. In Lee County, school board members must develop policies and make tough decisions on complex educational and social issues impacting the entire community. They bear the responsibility for an annual budget of approximately $39 million, 3,200 students, and 11 school campuses. The foundation of school leadership is ensuring equal learning opportunities for all students. We're proud of our school division, and School Board Appreciation Month is the time to recognize and to celebrate the accomplishments of our elected trustees. As a way of saying thank you to our school board members for their service and dedication to Lee County Public Schools, we have a certificate of appreciation as well as gifts and tokens of appreciation from the different schools and from the central office staff, and those, as you can see, are here on the front. At this time, I'd like to present each member of the board with a certificate of appreciation. The Virginia School Board Association Member of Certificate of Appreciation is presented to each board member in recognition for your dedication and service to excellence in education on behalf of the students of the Commonwealth of Virginia. Mike Twigg. Debbie Jessen. Kyle Chapman. Mike Harper. Don Williams.
I wish I had a voting for you, but I have a little warden.
Next is the V.S.B.A. School Board Clerk Appreciation Week, February 17th through the 21st, 2014.
The Virginia School Board Association Board of Directors has designated the third week in February, February 17th through the 21st, as Virginia School Board Association's School Board Clerk Appreciation Week with the goal of building awareness of the role of board clerks and the part they play in assisting school board members, superintendents, and their local schools. The Virginia School Board Association encourages all school boards to take the opportunity to acknowledge your local school board clerks by officially designating the third week in February as School Board Appreciation Week. Later in the meeting, we'll ask you to approve a resolution proclaiming the third week in February as School Board Clerk Appreciation Week. And as a way of saying thank you to the school board clerks for the job that they have done and that they continue to do, they work hard for our board, for myself, and as well as for our schools, we want to present them with a certificate of appreciation, and I think the schools have also provided them with some gifts as well, so I want to say thank you to them, and at this time, I'll present them with their certificates of appreciation. The school board appreciation certificates say Virginia School Board Clerk Appreciation in honor of your dedication and hard work for public education through continued service to the students. Alicia Fields.
Thank you.
Kathy Bergen. Denise. Thank you, Debbie.
Next, we'd like to recognize the schools with the highest percent of attendance.
Okay, the schools with the highest percentage of attendance for the month of January. First place is St. Charles Elementary School with 97.60, and Flatwoods Elementary comes in second with 95.19. So congratulations to those two schools.
Next, we recognize the spelling bee winners.
Good evening. Tonight, we want to recognize the participants in the 52nd Lee County Spelling Bee that was held January 16th in the Smith Auditorium. This was the Scripps Howard National Spelling Bee, and we had nine participants that participated in the spelling bee representing their schools. Cody Lane from Dryden, Caleb Fritz from Eltonoff, and he's here. Alden Nutsey from Edeldale, Sean Hampton from Flatwoods, Sid Barrett from Jonesville Middle School, and Sid was the champion speller, and he'll be representing Lee County Public Schools in Knoxville on March 8th and 9/30th. And we hope that he'll be going on, and maybe another one also, to D.C. He represented Pennington Middle School, and we want to thank the principal for being here tonight and supporting his student. We have, I'm sorry. Then we have Tyler Hammond, another here. Everybody knows Tyler. He represented Pennington Middle School, and his principal's here also, and we commend him for doing so. Tyler was second, but Tyler plans to go on, and he's already registered for the contest or competition at Knoxville, so between these, we hope that we'll have a winner. Go on. We have Alexander Wilton from Rose Hill, and then we have Jacob Jenkins, which was St. Charles, and I'm going to tell you that his principal was very proud of this boy. You'd have to know his history to know how proud he was of Jacob, and he was third place. And then we have Kennedy Sumter, Thomas Walker. So let's give him a big hand. And we extend our congratulations to you, and they received a silver dollar from Lee County Schools that night. Thank you. Thank you, parents.
I'd like to say that, as far as I'm concerned, all nine of those kids were winners. Sometimes you can be the best, and you still get a word that sticks you there. You've got gumption enough, particularly at their age, to get up in front of a bunch of people. I couldn't do it. And don't ask me how to spell anything, so.
Just the thing I wanted to say there was very unusual about this competition. Did you notice? They were all boys, and they were all spell champions representing their schools, all male.
No belongs at all in there. No belongs at all. Next, we recognize Virginia Tech Honors Band and All Districts, Mr. Carter.
We had six students that participated in the Virginia Tech Honors Band. Lee High School had four, Jacob Polly, Dylan Tomlinson, Isaac Gamble, Isaac Miller, and Adam Wright from Jonesville Middle School, and Hannah Martin from Pennington Middle School. Students that participated in the District 7 Honors Band were Blair Dean, Taylor Hines, Zachary Trees, Emma Poe, Mind Luchapon, Isaac Miller, Elijah Polly, Jacob Polly, Isaac Gamble, Dylan Tomlinson, Patrick Allen, and two middle school participants, Jonesville Middle School Sawyer Miller and Pennington Middle School Sherry Miller. So congratulations to those students.
A bunch of kids, and those here. Any of those participants here. The Senior High All District Course, Mr. Carter.
Senior High All District Course students under Ms. Carrie Belcher performed in Carroll County this past weekend, and we had students from Lee High School, and then Thomas Walker participated, Lee High students Erica Collins, Megan Klaus, Brianna Douse, Angela Manus, Josh Bocock, Logan Strange, and Dylan Tomlinson from Thomas Walker High School, Andy Yellam. And congratulations to Dylan Tomlinson for being selected All Virginia, All State course. Congratulations to those students as well.
Next, Mr. Carter, the drawing card.
We had three students, I don't know, actually, I not really noticed these students being in the paper until just recently, Ms. Callan, my things. We have three students from Lee County that have been featured in the King's Fourth Times News Drawing Card. I think we all have copies of that, but Logan Fritz from Eltonoff Elementary. Keegan Johnson from Eltonoff Elementary, and Jeffrey Poole from Eltonoff Elementary. So congratulations to those students for being featured in King's Fourth Times News Drawing Card.
Thank you, Mr. Carter. Next on the agenda is public expressions. Carter, remaining, anyone wanting to come and speak before the board? Selecting time to do so, we ask that your comments be contained in about five minutes. Anybody wanting to take advantage of this time? Here you now will move on to the reports section. First report is Mr. Carter, it's 2014 V.S.B.A. Regional Spring Network Forum, Mr. Carter.
The Southwest Virginia Forum will be held on Thursday, May the 8th. Last year, it was held at Bristol, Virginia Public Schools, their central office. Not sure where it's going to be held this year, as I said, more information will be forthcoming.
Mr. Carter, Mr. Chair, it will be somewhere in Tassell County. Tassell County is going to be hosting.
Next, we have the V.S.B.A. Hot Topic Conference, March 26th, 2014.
You have in your packet a hot topic conference that the Virginia School Board Association is sponsoring in Whistful, and school board members are encouraged to attend that if at all possible.
Allen City, the National School Breakfast Week, celebrated March 3rd through the 7th, and all schools, Mr. Carter.
Mr. Carter, board members, I just wanted to let you know that National School Breakfast Week is March 3rd through 7th. I'd like to thank our staff, I think they do an excellent job. I'd like to invite you to have breakfast with our staff and students that week at any of those schools, and also invite you to look at the website, we've added a school nutrition link on there if you get a chance. Again, our staff works very hard in doing that, and we serve about 4,000 meals per week, and I think with the staff we have, they do an excellent job.
Just one question, Mr. Carter. Will one of those days have green eggs and ham, since that will also fall within Dr. Seuss's birthday?
Well, I was asked that question today, and we already have menus, and if it falls within the regulations, we'd like to be back.
The Advanced Ed Accreditation, Mr. Carter.
I think I reported earlier that our Advanced Ed, our accreditation will expire on June the 30th, and we do have to host the next time review visit no later than the first week of May 2015 to be considered for reaccreditation through Advanced Ed. I also received notes in a letter dated February 6th that on January 23rd, the Advanced Ed Accreditation Commission reviewed and took action on the Accreditation Progress Report that was filed with Lee County Schools, and the Advanced Ed Commission accepted the report and granted continuation of the district's accreditation term.
Any comments or questions about that? Next, Mr. Carter, the enrollment.
At the end of January, enrollment was 3,202 students, that's down four from the previous month, it's up nine from the same period of time last year.
Financial report.
This is a summary of our financial activity for the month of January. We received state revenues totaling $2,669,439.87. Federal reimbursements totaled $127,963.71. Local cash receipts totaled $3,739.58. Title I reimbursements received totaled $237,895.19, and insurance receipts were $638,752.52 for total revenues of $387,738.87. As of January 31st, we have received 48.90% of our estimated revenues for the year. Our expenditures for the month of January, general fund payroll and accounts payable totaled $2632,291.31. Title I payroll and accounts payable totaled $130,351.73. Head start payroll was $85,604.8, and insurance payments totaled $510,062.58. Our expenditure totals for the month of January, $3,358,309.70, and as of January 31st, we received 44.41% of our coverations for the year.
Any comments or questions?
Mr. Chair, I have just a couple. Denise, I know there's two new bills on the bill sheet that's coming up also. One of them is the School Savers, you know what that stands for?
About when I'll file that before.
It's not categorized, so I just, and also the tests for higher standards.
I'll pull them before we get to the bill.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
Section 7 of the Action Agenda, Adams. On A, consider approval to renew insurance coverage for 2014-2015 school year, all policies except health insurance.
This is the year where we have our renewal package from Virginia Association of Counties. As you all know, that agency took over from the V.S.B.A. insurance where we had the money from last year. So at this time, I need a decision from the board as to whether we want to put that out to bid, or if we want to just renew with makeup of this coming year.
Last year, we actually bided, and I think we only received bids from late November, and V.S.B.A.'s the only two bids that we received, and we bided, and others no longer are V.S.B.A., so I really thought it was probably a waste of time.
Are we satisfied with what we have?
I don't have any issues with them. I can't answer for everybody, I'm like.
I'll make a motion that we renew.
Second. I have a motion of second, in discussion. Alvin Ferguson, aye? Opposed? The approval passes, too.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Consider approval of proclamation recognizing the School Board Clerk Appreciation Week, February 17th through the 21st, 2014, Mr. Carter.
We'd just like to ask that the Lee County School Board join with the V.S.B.A. in recognizing the many and varied contributions of our school board clerks by approving this resolution.
I have a motion of second. I have a motion of second, in discussion. Alvin Ferguson, aye? Motion passes. 2013-2014 school calendar as revised, Mr. Carter.
Actually, last month, this is the 2013 board thing, I hope it hasn't started online on this, and tell you that last month, the board did make some changes to the calendar. We only have one day remaining that is actually building, snow day. Mr. Miles and I talked some today about the revising of the calendar, and we feel like that, of course, with the upcoming or pending storm, that I'm not sure what it's going to do or how it's going to affect us, that it might not be a bad idea if the board just tabled this and waited till next month and let us take a look at it after we see a little closer to where we're at with the number of days that we miss.
We'll table that motion. Next, the school.
Well, Mr. Alicia, I'm the one that's actually responding, I did ask, but of course, I think he's going to do the I for school's house, so whenever we determine the last day of school, he's going to what's left, that's determined, and then set the date.
The school calendar for 2014-2015, Mr. Carter.
Let Mr. Carter go ahead, but I will say that last month, when we presented the calendar, we were presenting a hundred and a calendar, and I noticed some questions about that, and actually, I'll let Mr. Carter go ahead and explain, and then if you have any questions, we'll certainly try to answer those.
For the 3rd, there's requests for Mr. Twigg for the Virginia School and the Professional Development Day on 4th. I made that change. You see any further changes or additions?
In May, we did have 20 days listed, as there have been 20 teaching days, it was just actually miscopied there on the 27th, being the last day of school, the 28th, and it should have been the 28th, so I'm just not sure if you understand that, so there is actually 100 maybe days in the calendar, and that's really what was intended in having Mr. Carter had a figure to start with, because we had 20 days down toward the month of May.
Mr. Chairman, may I? Sure. I voted against the school calendar the last time, because I didn't like any of them, and really didn't like the one that was presented. And I was willing to take my wounds and come tonight and not say anything until I went into Pennington Middle School this week, and was confronted by, excuse me, last week, and was confronted by three women teachers that started, and before we got through, I had about five or six there. And we wondered why we had so many people that didn't vote either way for any of the calendars. Teachers told me that they were not happy with any of those calendars, as I was, and I said, well, I voted against it. But they said they voted against it, they didn't like what was there, and I told them that would bring it up one more time, and I would bring this up. We have 17 days off for Christmas there, and this year, we came to school, did not come to school on January 2nd and 3rd, it was pretty, and we could have come, knowing the snows were going to come. And they didn't like the fact that last year, and I notice it's not on there this year, I don't believe, yes, it is too, for election, that we took two days off for the election. And they liked what I presented the last time, which was, we had to take Election Day off because they got to vote. I don't see why that meeting was scheduled for Monday, couldn't be scheduled Tuesday, we couldn't come home to school on Monday. And the meaning of the whole thing is, we're running into a problem this year because we're probably going to have to go extra time. Every teacher I've ever talked to wants to get out as early as they can, and I think there's building in these so many days. We've got a week for Thanksgiving built in here, two days in November earlier, that's seven days in November built in, we've got 16, well, it's not that many days, it's just a couple of weeks, but it runs in because of weekends, it runs into 17 days of Christmas, another week of Easter. And I personally, my opinion is that if this is voted on tonight, I want to vote no again. But I certainly would like to see us see if we could find some way to find how many of these teachers didn't vote for one of them, because there's a huge number of teachers that did not vote any way, and I don't know that all of them didn't vote for that reason. If there's a way to do it, I certainly would like to see some more input from some of these teachers to find out if they didn't vote on either one.
Excuse me, I did send that request out to every school.
Yeah, I know you did.
All the principals.
I talked to Ms. Darty a while ago, me and her are good friends, and we'll be when we get through on this.
I was wondering too about the possibility, instead of having to come back Monday and school the week, if teachers wanted to finish up that last work day on Saturday, if that could be a little lightweight by.
Who you at?
The inmate. The 29th is a work day, and then you come back on Monday and do your other work day.
I got you.
And I know in other times, some have come in on Saturday to finish up rather than break up another week. That would just been, you know, at the auction.
Yes, first I that that shouldn't be a problem, most time, principals, if teachers request that, we're willing to do that, that's not a problem.
We certainly can table this till next month, if we could find some way to get some more input from teachers, but if they gave you no input to start with, that I'm not watching everybody's, we're ready to go there with it tonight. Is there a solution for middle ground, or?
I think Mr. Darty took the input that she received, and actually, they worked with the principals to develop five different calendars, and they had five options to choose from, the board voted last month to approve option four, if I'm not correctly started.
This is revised forward?
This is revised forward, because on four last month, we had down 20 days in May, and that was the main issue, and they're actually, when you counted, there was 19, but we certainly managed to present a calendar of 100 and 80 days.
And Mr. Carter, all the input from the teachers, every, all the input that I received from every teacher is in some calendar, eligible calendars that I presented, I had in.
I got you.
And I know, and other times, some have come in on Saturday to finish up rather than to break up another week. That would just be, you know, at the auction.
It's always been a...
As I said, that shouldn't be a problem most time, the principals, if teachers request that, are willing to do that, and that's not a problem.
We certainly can table this till next month, if we could find some way to get some more input from teachers, but if they gave you no inputs to start with, I don't know. Once everybody's, we're ready to go there with night. Is there a solution for middle ground?
I think Mr. Darty took the input that she received, and actually, they worked with the principals to develop five different calendars, and they had five options to choose from. The board voted last month to approve option four. Is that correct, Mr. Carter?
Yes.
This is revised forward?
This is revised forward, because on four, last month, we had down twenty days in May, and that was the main issue, and they're actually, when you counted them, it was nineteen, but we certainly managed to present a calendar of a hundred and maybe days.
And Mr. Carter, all the input from the teachers, every, all the input that I received from every teacher is in some calendar, elder board calendars that I presented, I had each school sign off, all the teachers sign off, and then the principal sign off on that as
Any more comments?
Say we vote.
Five motions to approve the revised number four calendar.
Make a motion.
Make a motion, have a second.
Second.
Have a motion of second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Consider approval of the overnight field trips, Mr. Carter.
Mr. Chairman, we have four requests for overnight field trips, for the, one for the DECA competition in Virginia Beach on February the twenty-second, or twenty-sixth through March second. Another for the LCC LA State Conference in Virginia Beach on April the third through April the sixth. Another one for All District Course at England High School on March seventh or eighth. And the final one for the All State Band Competitions at Jam Madison University in Harrisonburg on February the twenty-first and twenty-second.
In discussion. Can we script these together and purpose to save time? Can I get a motion to approve these field trips?
So moved.
Have a motion of second?
Second.
Have a motion of second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Mr. Carter, consider approval of agreement with the Moving Forward Physical Therapy, which is the new therapy operation there in Pennington, which replaces what Wellmont provided, Mr. Carter.
Mr. Chairman, we have an agreement with Moving Forward to provide our physical therapy. We'd just like to ask the board to approve that agreement, and I certainly would recommend that.
Make a motion.
Second.
Have a motion of second, in discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Need a motion to pay the bills.
I paid five months.
Sure.
Mr. Chair, I have the two invoices Mr. Twigg had a question about. The School Savers invoices for a total of three thousand six hundred nineteen dollars and ninety-five cents. That's for calculators and graphing calculators for tests taken. Tests for higher standards are, these are assessment programs for academic disciplines for improving student achievement on SOLs, and it's paid for in Title One payments. Okay. You want to...
I just, I've never noticed any of the bills before, and I just wonder what they were.
Well, this, we have done, we have purchased calculators for School Savers before, but probably not more than once.
If I'm not recognized.
Okay. Any other questions about the invoices?
Thank you, Denise. Make a motion for pay the bills.
Have a motion of second.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pay the bills. Reports and recommendations of the board, Mr. Twigg.
I'm just going to ask, Mr. Carter, how did you come along with that liaison kind of being discussed last week?
We've talked with the, discussed it with the principals, and they're selecting their representative for staff to serve on that committee.
Wonderful. And I'd be willing to volunteer to represent the school board, if anybody else would like to also, I think, if you'd ask. And I appreciate it, thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Twigg. Ms. Jesse.
Yes, I attended the Capital Connections meeting through the Virginia School Boards Association at the end of January. Among the things that we lobbied for was the statewide health insurance. Unfortunately, it died for a lack of emotion in such bidding, so that ability is out. The A through F grading of schools, there is a couple of bills about delaying that from either one year to three years, and then the, there's a bill to do away with the takeover mechanism. However, that was defeated, however, they said that they would do it by defunding the O E I, and that would be moving about six hundred thousand more dollars into the budget. Education could potentially be used. I did speak with the sponsors of the salary increase bills, and at least one of the gentlemen was very receptive to having some flexibility about maybe not necessarily providing a percentage increase. And while not exactly completely education related, I did talk with the legislators about what they could do about providing a subsidy for a hospital in the county. I was receptive on that. I would also like to thank the clerks for their service to the board, and also to the schools, those that provided the gifts to us. I've not looked over the table yet, seeing what's left, and I do appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Jesse. Mr. Chairman.
I just want to thank everyone for the gifts, and I always look forward to digging in those and reading the cards in there, so thank you, and also thank our clerks for doing such outstanding job every day. I'm just on board on that, so thank you.
I'd like to echo those sentiments for the hard work, and sometimes wanting, while you're doing what you're doing. I think one of the reasons we do what we do is those kids that came up here tonight, and those kids, we read the names off, those kids are representing Lee County, the Lee County school system in a great way. You hear a lot of negative, there's a lot of positive, and it starts at the bottom and goes to the top. We're all just as strong as our weakest link, and I like to think we've got a lot of strong links in this system. Mr. Twigg.
I also would like to thank all those for the gifts, also for the meal there. I know the next step, that is very, very good. And I'd like to say something especially for the clerks here, appreciate their work. I work with all three of them, and I want to tell everybody something or other. I honestly believe if something happened to all the board members tonight, the school system would go off. Something happens to these clerks, this school system is better than a dole mail, and they do the most important job in this place. I really wouldn't do the job, particularly now since I'm retired anyway, but I wouldn't do the job that Denise does, if it'd have me hack the money in Lee County to do it, because it's a thankless job, and it's hard to do. Also, I'd like to say since this is a school board, we, I want to tell you, I am very proud of these people that I sit with on this board up here. Some of you don't like some of them, and a lot of you don't like me, but I want to tell you that they do get back there and they work, and they work hard. And I would like them just a little bit better tonight if they'd have voted for me on that other thing here a while ago. I want to tell you that they're doing a good job. And when people come up to me and tell me that nothing has happened in the last year, two years, I'm just going to look at them every time and say exactly the same thing. We're running, we're saving, we're taking years of Lee County, four million dollars off of what the school system ran two years ago, a year. And that is hard to do, and we're pushed to the limit, and they have to make decisions they don't like to make sometimes, and I do too. But I thank everybody in the school system, because it may be a step forward, a small step forward, but we've made some gain in this school system. I'd say one last word for our kids, and some of those here, because I know them, some of them personally there, and everything else. Our kids are everything. It doesn't matter. I'm so old, it doesn't make any difference what happens to me, or what I get up here and say wrong. We don't get these kids trained to turn this country around, we're in bad shape, we're headed in the wrong direction, people. We can't do it. Those kids can, if they, if they got the right training and the right leadership, and won't come back, so I'm very proud of this group here. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Twigg, for most of those comments. Would someone please send to Executive Session, please?
Mr. Chair, I'd make a motion that we go to Executive Session to consider consultation with Legal Counsel two point two dash three seven one one A seven, Discipline of the Student Section two point two dash three seven one one A two, and Personnel Section two point two dash three seven one one A one of the Code of Virginia.
Have a motion of second.
Right.
Have a motion of second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Executive Session.